Excellencies, distinguished delegates, I call to order the special session of the Assembly of State Parties to the Rome Statute of the International Criminal Court. It is an honour and a privilege for me to wish you all a good welcome. Our agenda is an ambitious one. We will hold in-depth discussions on the review of the amendments on the crime of aggression, and I am sure that the Assembly will fulfil all of its duties responsibly and in a timely Before I continue, I invite you to stand and observe a minute of silence for prayer or meditation, in particular for the victims.
Before addressing substantive matters, I would like to provide some practical information. We must also take certain decisions which are purely procedural in order to ensure that the work of the Assembly proceeds smoothly. Following drawing lots, which took place at the 10th meeting of the Bureau on the 4th of June 2025, under decision ICC ASP/1/4 of 3 September 2002, the delegation of Senegal will occupy the first seat to my right and other delegations will follow in the English alphabetical order. Given the limited capacity of the room, two seats will be available for each state party. Other delegates are invited to take a seat in the seats reserved in the back of the room. For observer states as well as for other observers, participants and guests, in accordance with rules 92, 93 and 94 of the Rules of Procedure, seats will also be reserved in the back of the room. NGOs are invited to take their seats.
In accordance with Article 112, Paragraph 1 of the Rome Statute, states that are not parties to the statute but have signed either the statute or the final act of the Rome Conference may participate as observers in the Assembly. Observer states are allowed to participate in the deliberations of the Assembly but may not participate in the taking of decisions. States that are not parties to the Rome Statute and that have not signed the final act or the statute do not have observer status. Under Rule 94 of the Rules of Procedure, the President may invite those states to be present during the work of the Assembly, subject to approval from the Assembly. I propose that the Assembly invite the following states to be present during the Assembly’s work: Bhutan, Democratic Republic of Korea, Equatorial Guinea (Esfatini), Laotian People’s Democratic Republic, Lebanon, Mauritania, Federal States of Micronesia, Myanmar, New Guinea, Palau, Papua New Guinea, Rwanda, Somalia, South Sudan, Tonga, Turkmenistan and Tuvalu. May I take it that the Assembly wishes to invite these states? I see no objection, it is so decided. Distinguished delegates, we have three working days to complete our agenda. To meet all possible eventualities, I will continue to count on your full cooperation and understanding. Our first order of business is the adoption of the agenda for this special session. The provisional agenda is contained in document ICC ASP/ S1/1/rev1 and an annotated agenda is contained in document ICC ASP/ S1/1/Addition 1. May I take it that the Assembly wishes to adopt the agenda as contained in document I see no objection, the agenda contained in document ICC ASP/ S1/1/rev1 is adopted. Distinguished delegates, I wish to indicate that high-level ICC officials are not present at this special session. We would however appreciate hearing their views on matters of importance to the Assembly. We will now hear a pre-recorded statement by the President of the Court, Jats Tomoko-Akane.
Madam President, Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, good morning. The adoption of the statute in Rome in 1998 was without doubt one of the greatest day for international law and for the fight against impunity for the most serious crimes. States subsequently agreed on a definition of the crime of aggression in Kampala in 2010 and activated the crime of aggression in 2017. Given the background and inherent difficulties, the fact that states agreed on a definition of the crime of aggression in Kampala was definitely a huge success for those who seek accountability for perpetrators of the crime. However, unlike for other crimes that are under the competence of the Court, Article 15 bis, Paragraph 5 of the statute stipulates that, in respect of a state that is not a party to this statute, the Court shall not exercise its jurisdiction of the crime of aggression when committed by those state’s nationals or on its territory. Article 15 bis, Paragraph 4 also allows state parties to opt out of the jurisdictional regime concerning the crime. In practice, and unlike for other crimes, the Court seemingly can exercise jurisdiction over the crime of aggression in only certain limited circumstances. As you are aware, the ICC is currently facing unprecedented measures that attempt to undermine the independence of an international judicial institution which operates under the mandate from 125 state parties from all corners of the globe. These measures also show that international justice is not merely symbolic, but that it matters. It is therefore important to think not only about how we can improve the existing framework, but also about how we can better use the existing framework in the meantime. The effectiveness of the current provision on the crime of aggression depends largely on the number of exceeding states, and we should encourage more states to ratify the Kampala amendments without delay. Currently, there are only 48 state parties ratify the amendment, and this is insufficient for the effective use of the provision. To strengthen the Rome Statute system, I also encourage all states who haven’t done so yet to commence the ratification of the Agreement of Privileges and Immunities, the APIC, as it clarifies and solidifies the scope of privileges and immunities enjoyed by elected officials and their families as well as staff of the Court, ensuring that their work is free from external pressures and interference. This is an important step to support the work of the Court by strengthening its legal framework, and it therefore contributes to the advancement of international justice and a rule-based international order. Let me add that no state parties to the Rome Statute can also ratify the APIC if they wish. Ladies and gentlemen, like any other international judicial body, the ICC and its legal framework need to undergo a gradual and continuous process of refinement and improvement. In the over 20 years of its existence, ICC proceedings have consistently evolved to become more efficient and effective in achieving its mandate. There are countless examples of adjustments and refinements through amendments to the legal framework and case law that aim to make the ICC more efficient and effective. It is easy to lose sight of the fact that at this very moment, countless civilians live in ruins, subject to treatment contrary to international law, and that the Court was created precisely to be a grimor of hope for these victims. It is our collective duty to cherish this precious project created by the wisdom of mankind. I firmly believe that, united by our unwavering commitment to international justice, we can further strengthen our collective bond and ensure that this important institution continues to thrive. The decision to amend the statute is of course a sovereign decision to be taken by state parties, and I wish you fruitful discussions during this special session. Ladies and gentlemen, the state parties to the Rome Statute created the Court, determined to put an end to impunity of the most serious crimes of concern to the international community as a whole. I therefore encourage you to seize this moment of togetherness, to show your unity in supporting the Court and its vital work. Thank you very much.
I thank President Akana for her timely and thoughtful statement, which offered a principles and constructive perspective on the issues before us. On behalf of the Assembly, I wish to express appreciation for the dedication and resilience of the Principals and staff of the Court in navigating this challenging period. The Assembly will now begin its consideration of Agenda Item 5. In accordance with Rule 25 of the Rules of Procedure, a credentials committee consisting of representatives of nine state parties shall be appointed at the beginning of each session on the proposal of the President. After broad consultations with state parties, I propose, in accordance with the Bureau’s decision, that the credentials committee consists of the following states: Belgium, Bolivia, Brazil, Cyprus, France, Japan, Senegal, Slovenia and South Africa. May I take it that the Assembly agrees to proceed accordingly? It is so decided. I wish to remind representatives pursuant to Rule 25 of the Rules of Procedure, credentials shall be submitted to the Secretariat if possible, not later than 24 hours after the opening of the session. Credentials shall be issued by the head of state or government, or by the Minister of Foreign Affairs, or by a person authorized by either of them. Before we move on to the next agenda item, I wish to indicate that the Bureau decided to recommend that the Assembly would appoint a rapporteur for the special session. I have received indication that Farida Yasmin of Bangladesh is proposed to be the rapporteur. Does the Assembly agree to appoint Farida Yasmin as rapporteur for the special session? I see no objection, it is so decided. I congratulate Farida Yasmin of Bangladesh on her appointment as rapporteur, and thank her for taking up this important function on behalf of the Assembly. I invite her to join me at the podium. Distinguished delegates, we shall now turn to Agenda Item 6, Organisation of Work. The Bureau has considered the Programme of Work as reflected in the ASB Journal of 5th July 2025, and proposes that they serve as the basis of our work for this session. I trust that you will all understand that the Programme of Work may be adjusted depending on the progress across the agenda items. I urge all representatives to arrive on time so that the Assembly may complete its work within the session. As proposed by the Bureau, the Assembly will meet in plenary session and will hold informal consultations on key issues requiring decisions. Today, on Monday 7th of July, this first plenary meeting from 10 to 13 hours will address the issues listed in the provisional work programme. The general debate will begin this morning and will continue at the afternoon plenary meeting at 15 hours. Given the session’s limited duration, the Bureau has decided that each speaker will be allocated two and five minutes to allow for broad participation. On Tuesday 8th July, the third plenary meeting from 10 to 11:30 will be dedicated to the topic Lessons Learned from the Kampala Amendments, Ratification Procedures and Their Implementation. Immediately thereafter, from 11:30 to 12, the Working Group on the Kampala Review would hold its first meeting, followed by informal consultations. Informal consultations will continue without interpretation from 13:15 to 14:30. The afternoon session on Tuesday from 15 to 17 hours will be dedicated to further informal consultations, and from 17 to 18 hours, the fourth plenary will convene to consider Agenda Item 9 of the provisional agenda. Under this item, the coordinator will present a progress report summarising the discussions held so far and outline the two draft proposals currently before the Assembly. These resolutions are the ones that the Working Group on Amendments has discussed and of which also new versions have been presented. The Working Group of the Kampala Review will continue its work on that basis. It is expected that the Assembly will take appropriate action by the end of the special session on the basis of these proposals and the report of the Working Group. On Wednesday 9th July, informal consultations will resume from 10 to 11:30, followed by a formal meeting of the Working Group on the Kampala Review from 11:30 to 12:30. The credentials committee will meet from 12:30 to 13 hours. The final plenary will take place from 15 to 18 hours, during which the Assembly will adopt the draft resolutions and to adopt its report. May I take it that the Assembly decides to adopt the Programme of Work reflected in the ASB Journal dated 5th of July? I see no objection, it is so decided. I wish to draw to the Assembly’s attention that at its 2nd July 2025 meeting, the Bureau recommended that the following representative serve as coordinator during the special session. For the Working Group on the Kampala Review, Ambassador Juan Jose Quintana of Colombia. May I take it that the Assembly wishes to proceed on this basis? I see no objection, it is so decided. I congratulate Ambassador Juan Jose Quintana and wish him every success as he carries out his responsibilities. I assure him that he can rely on the Bureau to provide any guidance that may be necessary. The Assembly will now turn to Agenda Item 4, States in Areas. According to Article 112, Paragraph 8 of the Rome Statute, a state party in areas equal or exceeding its contributions for the previous two full years shall have no vote in the Assembly and in the Bureau. Nevertheless, the Assembly may permit voting if it is satisfied the failure to pay is due to conditions beyond the control of the state party. The Secretary has sent note verbiage on 29th April and on 26th June 2025 to all concerned states via their UN missions and embassies in the Hague and Brussels, informing them of their areas and the minimum payment required to avoid the application Article 112, Paragraph 8 of the Rome Statute. Based on information from the Court, 15 state parties are currently subject to Article 112, Paragraph 8. I wish to recall that the Bureau agreed to address in 2025 the issue of possible criteria for assessing requests for waiver of the loss of voting rights pursuant to Article 112, Paragraph 8 of the Rome Statute. This matter has been assigned to the Facilitation for Budget Management Oversight where discussions are ongoing. On 2nd July 2025, the Bureau emphasised the need to continue consultations on developing agreed criteria for future waivers. In this context, reference was made to a joint non-paper submitted to the Facilitation which highlighted those relevant criteria and procedures under Article 112, Paragraph 8, and had already been sent out in the past Assembly resolutions and should be implemented. Pending a decision by the Assembly at its 24th session, the Bureau decided to recommend that such requests for the waiver of loss of voting rights would be granted in line with established practice of the Assembly. I wish to note that the Bureau having received requests for a waiver of the loss of voting rights during the special session of the Assembly from the following state parties: Democratic Republic of the Congo, Gabon, Republic of the Congo and the Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela. The Bureau decided to recommend that the Assembly grant this request for a waiver from the loss of voting rights at the special session. Does the Assembly agree to proceed on this basis? Thank you. It is so. I recognise the delegation of Argentina, you have the floor.
Argentina believes it is important to reiterate, as it did already in the previous session of this Assembly regarding the situation of Venezuela. The situation in Venezuela has deteriorated even further after the fraudulent elections of July 2024. They demand immediate attention, and we profoundly regret the lack of any substantive progress dealing with prosecution. Venezuela is not a state respecting the rule of law. Human rights are systematically violated, the needs of the people are deliberately ignored. The inhuman treatment and violations of a serious nature of human rights continue this year in Venezuela. They demand strict and complete investigation from international justice. Argentina cannot request a waiver. We urge the Assembly to ensure fulfilling obligations when this state acts against the principles of the Charter of Rome. Illegally, there is illegal detention, we urge immediate freedom of the person. Venezuela has to respect the value of the International Court and this Assembly.
I thank for your statement. If I gather correctly, there is no state opposing that the Assembly agrees with the granting of waivers, those four states. Thank you. It is so decided. Any other states in areas that wish to request a waiver of the loss of voting rights shall approach the Secretariat before this afternoon’s plenary meeting at its office located in the conference room 2 suite of office, which is right below this room, so I hope you can find it easily. I would like to stress once again the importance of ensuring that the Court is provided with the necessary financial resources. The status of areas is a matter of great concern to the Court. I encourage all state parties to transfer their assessed contributions in full and on time, or in the event of pre-sexting areas immediately, in accordance with Article 115 of the Statute and Rule 105, Paragraph 1 of the Financial Regulations and Rules. I would now invite the coordinator of the Working Group on the Kampala Review, Ambassador Juan Jose Quintana, to present the report of the Working Group on Amendments in relation to its substantive work held during the year. You have the floor.
Gracias, señora Presidenta.
Thank you, madam. It is my honour to present the report of the Working Group on Amendments in document ICC ASP/ S1/2 and Addendum 1. The seven meetings the group held this year were held in accordance with the mandate of the 23rd session of the Assembly, Paragraph 63 of the General Resolution, whereby there is an invitation for regular meetings of the Working Group to be convened pursuant to the 2025 principles in order to hold debates on the Kampala amendments, on the crime of aggression, preparing for the special session pursuant to the agreement to review the Kampala amendments. All the meetings were in hybrid format in order to ensure transparency and inclusion in the preparatory discussions. The report indicates that the Working Group discussed both the scope of the review process as well as the outlines of a proposal for the amendment of 15 bis of the Rome Statute amended. The proposal is intended to harmonise the jurisdictional system of the Court with regard to the crime of aggression, looking at its competence regarding other crimes. This proposal was submitted to the Chair of the Assembly by an interregional group of states, vis-à-vis Germany, Costa Rica, Slovenia, Sierra Leone, Ivano... of states, vis-à-vis Germany, Costa Rica, Slovenia, Sierra Leone, Ivan Van Wato on the 8th of November last year. And on the 4th of April, there was an official presentation to the Secretary-General of the UN as the deposit of the Rome Statute. On the 8th of April this year, the documents were distributed to all members. Regarding the debates in this session, the report describes the various areas on which debate should focus strictly within the context of the amendment and the relative legal processes, where a broader area could be included, such as considering ratification, the challenges with that, and lessons learned from the Campala process inter alia. During the group's meetings, emphasis was placed repeatedly on the need for a broad consensus and the need for political cohesion amongst states parties. The proposal for harmonization was broadly supported in principle, but also various political, legal, and procedural qualms were voiced. Delegations stressed that the success of any amendment would depend on institutional unity within the Assembly. Many states considered the extraordinary session as a special session as an opportunity to achieve an open agreement on decisions and ensure the need for a broad consensus. The success of any decision will depend not on the result of the proposed amendments, but also on the promotion of unity and a substantive inclusive process. The report emphasized the important role played by civil society organizations throughout the year, including the endeavors to support harmonization in all sessions of the Working Group, and its call for decisive action in order to bridge the gaps when it comes to accountability for the crime of aggression. It was emphasized that what is needed vitally to ensure fair justice and reparation for victims and ensure the international prestige of the Court must mean that justice doesn't depend on the acceptance of one state of a specific jurisdictional clauses. In addition to describing the nature and scope of the effects regarding the amendments, the discussions covered much in the report. Strategies for harmonization and the opportunity for this was included, with states parties being suggested be addressed gradually the inclusion of legal amendments, whereas others preferred just one step in order to avoid fragmentation and backstepping. The group distributed the documents for the special session, looking at the Campala Review process on aggression in order to deal with the challenge of ratification, including lessons learned and including complementarity, cooperation, and universality. The report gathers the details of the Working Group on the effects of the amendment for the states parties and the entry into force. It also describes the consideration by the group in two meetings of the proposed draft resolution by Lichtenstein entitled Draft Resolution on the Crime of Aggression, Article 15 bis of the Rome Statute, which would harmonize the system for the crime of aggression in accordance with the other major crimes under the statute. This was welcomed by several delegations, some of which suggested improvements to the text. The draft resolution, as reviewed, is in Annex 1 of the report. The Working Group also considered in its last meeting a separate draft resolution proposed by Canada, France, Japan, New Zealand, the UK, in order to consider additional question to continue to consider the matters raised in the Working Group, taking into account the complexity and importance of the issue at hand. This alternative proposal is in Annex 2 of the report. The report concludes of the recommendation of the Working Group that the Assembly paid due attention to the matters discussed and the two final draft resolutions submitted to the group and examined by it. As Chair of the Working Group on Amendments, I am deeply grateful to all delegations for their constructive approach and flexibility, and this also goes for representatives of civil society for their active contribution and valuable discussions which serve to drive forward the work of the group. Thank you.
I thank you very much for presenting this status report on the work of the WGA, carried out pursuant to resolution ICC hyphen ASP slash 23 slash Resolution 1. I commend you for the efficient and effective manner in which you have carried out the mandate of the Assembly. I wish you every success as you lead the discussions during the special session in your current role as Coordinator of the Working Group on the Campala Review. Distinguished delegates, representatives, let us now turn to Agenda Item 7, General Debate. I wish to remind you that the list of speakers was opened on 30th June 2025. In line with Rule 50 of the Rules of Procedure of the Assembly, statements of no longer than two and a half minutes, and this time will be strictly enforced. In view of the time constraints of the special session, all statements will be delivered from national seats and the microphone will start blinking at two minutes. Pursuant to the Bureau decision of 20th June 2025, the general debate will continue this afternoon from 15 hours onwards. According to the 26th June 2025 decision of the Bureau, only in-person statements are allowed. Ministers and vice ministers are given precedence, followed by states speaking on behalf of groups as per established practice. Time slots were allocated on first-come, first-served basis with priority given to states parties. States may also submit written statements only instead of in-person statements. And if your statement has had to be shortened, a full-length statement can be sent to the Secretary and published at the website. The list of speakers can be found at the conference officer's desk and on the wall at both entrances of this room. I would once more remind that the two-and-a-half-minute time limit will be strictly enforced, and the microphones will be turned off in 30 seconds if this is exceeded. The first speaker on my list this morning is His Excellency, Mr Dominic Aguridi Dinga Ayen, Attorney General and Minister of Justice of Ghana. You have the floor.
Madam President, Ghana welcomes the convening of the special session of the states parties to the Rome Statute to review the Campala amendments on the crime of aggression. Despite being buffeted on many sides, the International Criminal Court continues to be the foremost international judicial instrument for combating impunity, deterring the commission of serious international crimes, and delivering justice to victims. As a country committed to respect for international law, Ghana values the court's unique and complementary role and recognizes the important contribution that the effective implementation of the Statute can make to the maintenance of international peace and security. Madam President, the inclusion of the crime of aggression in the Rome Statute in 2010, following the Campala amendment, was a milestone. However, its practical application has remained constrained. The jurisdictional threshold agreed under Article 15 bis, wherein the court may exercise jurisdiction only where both the state of the suspect and the territorial state are parties to the Statute, or where the United Nations Security Council refers the matter, has rendered the prosecution of aggression largely ineffectual. Ghana thanks the Working Group on Amendments for its engagements and welcomes across-regional groups' commitment to establish for the Statute the same level of jurisdiction for the crime of aggression as that agreed for the three core crimes. To remove the limitations placed in the way of the court, the political compromise carved over the crime of aggression must be removed by ensuring parity of treatment or harmonization of jurisdiction. Ghana therefore takes note of the proposed draft resolution and would actively, constructively, and purposefully participate in its further consideration to ensure that consistency, fairness, and the effective pursuit of accountability is implemented across all four core crimes. The outcome of this session must reflect our collective aspiration to uphold justice, safeguard the rule of law, and deter future...
Thank you very much for your statement, and as I indicated, the microphones will be closed automatically at the time of going beyond three minutes. I recognize Canada asking for the floor.
Good morning, Madam President, and thank you so much for gathering us today in this special session. I'd like to make a point of order, since we noted that the microphone for our esteemed colleague of Ghana was stopped after 2.5 minutes. But we also noted that you made earlier on in your introduction the point that we would have all day today for general statement. If we take into consideration that there are 46 speakers currently on the speakers' list, if we would be finished by the end of the morning, considering we have all the afternoon dedicated also to the general debate, we believe that it would be fair to give to all delegation at least one more minute, if not five minutes, to make their intervention, considering the current speakers list. Thank you.
I thank Ghana for their intervention, and indeed, I explained the time limits allocated to speakers on the basis of the decision of the Bureau. And of course, when planning the session, we did want to allow all delegations wishing to speak have the opportunity, and that's why I have, under my own authority, added the 30 seconds while I introduced. I said that the two-and-a-half minutes is the time allotted to speakers. I think that is the time that people have been aware of when they have been preparing their statements, so that is also fair for those who have prepared shorter statements. If we now start making it much longer, then those who have prepared shorter statements would be in a more difficult situation. So that is why I did say that the microphone would be cut after 30 seconds, and that was also the case in this, it was cut off at three minutes. Canada, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. We appreciate that you used your discretion to add 30 seconds to all delegations, but even with this additional 30 seconds, we basically would be ended by the end of this morning session. Considering that we have all the afternoon dedicated also to the general debate, my delegations please to put forward the suggestion that we give all delegation at least an additional minute. Thank you. So at least we would have the privilege to hear the end of the statement delivered by our esteemed colleague from Ghana. Thank you.
We have just counted together with the Secretary that the amount of speakers and how much it would take altogether if we allowed speakers to use four minutes, and taking into account the intervention by Canada, I would use my authority to rule that we would cut the microphones at four minutes. I hope the Secretary can, or the technicians can organize it so that it will function, because it was set previously to three minutes. And if the representative of Ghana wishes to say the last part of their intervention that was without microphone, we did hear, of course, it without microphone, so the interpreters may not have heard it, so you will be allowed to say the latter part of your intervention if you so wish.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you very much, Canada, for the intervention. Ghana welcomes the convening of this special session of states parties to the Rome Statute to review the Campala amendments on the crime of aggression. Despite being buffeted on many sides, the International Criminal Court continues to be the foremost international judicial instrument for combating impunity, deterring the commission of serious international crimes, and delivering justice to victims. As a country committed to respect for international law, Ghana values the court's unique and complementary role and recognizes the important contribution that the effective implementation of the Statute can make to the maintenance of international peace and security. Thank you, Madam President.
I thank you. I thank you very much for your intervention, and next speaker will be His Excellency, Mr Robert Abi Sokomonyan, Deputy Minister of Foreign Affairs of Armenia. You have the floor. I see that Chile has requested the floor before I turn to the representative of Armenia. Chile, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The point of order, I think it is important to respect rules. The Bureau established two-and-a-half minutes. Various delegations have adjusted to that time limit, and I think that this is not the right time to change the rules. If you wish to have more time, it should be maximum 30 seconds more, but I think four minutes means that we are not observing already approved rules. Thank you, Madam.
Indeed, that was the reason why I did not feel too comfortable to change the rules, as I know that states parties have, those who have diligently prepared their statements. And I would, of course, hope that with this one, it will be so that delegations do not go beyond the time limit that was put forward. go beyond the time limit that was put forward and adopted by the Bureau. But the ultimate measure, closing of the microphone, will happen at four minutes at the latest. So please try to stick to the time limit that was already set by the Bureau. And we would manage to have a fair distribution of time. And also, bearing in mind that we only have three days, that even if we were prepared to go all the way until the end of the afternoon, of course, we can very usefully make use of the time that may be left over for our deliberations of this session. So I hope with this ruling, we can move on with our list of speakers. There is next speaker, His Excellency Robert Apisokomonyan from Armenia. Chile.
Thank you, Madam. Understanding the reasons you have expressed, by exception, my delegation will accept that view, which is contrary to the rules, but we hope there are no further deviations from rules already adopted. Thank you.
I thank you very much for your cooperation. And I will call floor to Minister of Justice, Deputy Minister of Foreign Affairs of Armenia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Excellencies, distinguished delegates, ladies and gentlemen, it's an honor to address the assembly on behalf of the Republic of Armenia. At the outset, we express our sincere appreciation for convening this timely special session and for the efforts towards open and inclusive dialogue on the review of the Kampala amendments related to the crime of aggression. Armenia has consistently supported international legal mechanisms to prevent grave violations of international law and to ensure accountability. Against the backdrop of deepening security crisis and the recent history in our region, where Armenia has faced issues related to the maintenance of peace and upholding of international law, robust mechanisms for early warning, early action, and the responsibility to protect are as urgent as ever. Today's session and the process of consultations that preceded it serve for an honest reflection on what has been achieved and how to ensure ICC can effectively prevent and punish the unlawful use of force. In this regard, the jurisdictional constraints imposed by the Kampala amendments continue to limit the court's ability to address this grave crime comprehensively. This special session presents a historic opportunity to address these jurisdictional limitations through the adoption of a proposed amendment. This will be an important step towards ensuring that ICC can effectively fulfill its mandate to prevent and punish the unlawful use of force, which remains a fundamental threat to international peace and security. Armenia acknowledges the diversity of perspectives among the states' parties concerning the operationalization of the crime of aggression. We do not view this diversity as a complexity, but rather as a testament to the richness of international legal discourse and the value of fostering consensus through respectful and inclusive dialogue. In this vein, Armenia reiterates its commitment to ongoing dialogue focused on fostering shared understanding, strengthening the legal framework, and ensuring that future progress is rooted in international law and widely endorsed by the global community. Madam President, we believe that any evaluation of the court's jurisdiction and practice must be guided by the foundational principles of the Rome Statute and our collective commitment to prevent the most serious crime concern to the international community. In conclusion, Armenia remains committed to the integrity of the Rome Statute system, and we stand ready to engage constructively in all discussions that contribute to fair, effective, and universally respected international criminal justice system. And I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And the next speaker will be His Excellency Mr. Pius Biribonboja, Solicitor General of Uganda. You have the floor.
Your Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of my delegation and my country, I take this opportunity to thank you for overseeing the preparations for this special session and to congratulate you on the excellent manner in which you have so far steered the business of the meeting. Madam President, Uganda takes note of the work of the working group on amendments for a little over one year and of the intense discussions that have preceded this special session of the Assembly of States' Parties. We thank those states' parties that took the opportunity to make their views known in the course of the dialogue and reflection on the Kampala amendments on the crime of aggression in preparation for this session. As the country that hosted the first review conference in 2010, we are keenly following the discussions and are looking forward to the continued dialogue on the subject matter during this session, including making a determination as to whether any further amendments are warranted. Madam President, we are live to the fact that fifteen years since the Kampala amendments, only forty-eight states' parties out of one hundred and twenty-five have ratified them. While different commentators have, depending on where they stand on many other questions, given different interpretations to the apparent lack of enthusiasm among the states' parties towards the amendments, what is incontrovertible is that the present number of ratifications does not paint a tremendous picture. To us, this is a signal of something fundamental, that is to say, the reality that the questions, considerations, and concerns that led to the decision in Rome in 1998 to defy the definition of the crime of aggression and to the Kampala compromise remain in place, the passage of time notwithstanding. It therefore appears to us that it would be prudent to first build consensus around the already agreed amendments before embarking on more, even polemical ones, which could in the end serve the very objectives being pursued. Madam President, our views on this matter are fairly known by now, but we nonetheless will state them here. The question of whether or not an act by a state is one of aggression has a great bearing on states' inherent right to self-defense, which has historically been rightly placed in the political realm under the United Nations Charter. It is for this reason that we have not ratified the Kampala amendments, and it is for the same reason that we are not in support of the proposed amendments too. Madam President, we further share the view that has been expressed by some states' parties that attempts to extend jurisdiction of the court to non-states' parties at this time for whatever reasons could be ill-timed and risks provoking further complications emanating from those non-states' parties and to divisions among states' parties that the court hardly needs at this particular time. We do not think that this is either appropriate or necessary to further elaborate on this. Let the court remain for those that subscribe to the agreement, establishing it in line with the time-tested principles of international law until such a time that the world will have fully coalesced around a different approach. Madam President, I take the opportunity to reiterate our usual readiness to take part in any dialogue now or in the future towards decisions and outcomes that strengthen rather than impair the court. I wish everyone here great deliberations over the coming days. Thank you.
Thank you for your statement. And I would now invite His Excellency Mr. Shadrak Mose, Solicitor General Office of the Attorney General State Law Office and State Department of Justice of Kenya, to speak. You have the floor.
On behalf of the Republic of Kenya and on behalf of my delegation is pleased to join other states' parties during this special session on the review of the amendments on the crime of aggression. This session is held at a time when international law under the group of governance architecture, which we have underpinned world peace since the end of World War II, 1945, is under immense pressure from both geopolitics and the increased incidence of armed conflicts. This unfortunate and concerning development calls for a return to a rule-based multilateral system, which is the anchor of Kenya's foreign policy and diplomatic engagements at matrator fora. As we laid buried on the agenda items before us, may we be guided by the desire to restore balance and order through pragmatic engagement. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, as a state party to the Rome Statute for over two decades, Kenya reiterates its unwavering commitment and full support for the International Criminal Court, its function, independence, and operations. On the overarching agenda for this special session of the National Assembly of State Parties, Kenya advocates for a consensus approach that considers the diverse and peculiar circumstances and the concerns of all state parties. It is essential that we reflect on lessons learned and identify ways to enhance the effectiveness of the International Criminal Court in fulfilling its mandate. Furthermore, this special session provides an opportunity for state parties to reflect on lessons learned and agree on the way forward to make the International Criminal Court more effective in discharge of its mandate and fit for purpose. We look forward to the robust and constructive discussions under this agenda item. Kenya remains committed to supporting and cooperating with the court and urges states' parties to dedicate themselves in achieving noble goals for which the court was established. We stand ready to engage in robust and constructive dialogue on all agenda items to ensure that the court remains relevant and achieve its mandate. The delegation of the Republic of Kenya also reserves the right to intervene on other agenda items. In conclusion, we would like to reiterate Kenya's firm commitment to upholding the principles of justice, accountability, and the rule of law. Let us work together in unity and solidarity to strengthen the International Criminal Court and advance the cause of international justice. I thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And I would now invite Her Excellency Ms. Kabya Grej Dogirde, Vice Minister of Foreign Affairs of Lithuania. You have the floor.
Madam President, distinguished delegates, at the outset, I would like to reiterate that Lithuania aligns itself with a statement delivered by Germany later on behalf of a Group of Friends on the review of the jurisdiction of ICC over the crime of aggression. And in my national capacity, I would like to underline the historical importance of this special session. Reality we witness today demands our solidarity towards making sure that the law is designed to serve those who mostly need it in the pursuit of justice. We not only have a shared mandate, but also a shared responsibility to make sure that justice does not change its face according to interests. Institutions are only as strong and useful as the rules and constraints allow them to be. Credibility of international criminal law depends on clear norms, institutions having the mandate to enforce them, and its consistent and coherent enforcement. Although the Rome Statute after Kampala amendments has clear definition of the crime of aggression, its jurisdictional regime remains uniquely fragmented. And this crucial accountability gap compromises our values, undermines peace, and emboldens to breach fundamental principle of international law that is non-use of force. Ad-hoc solutions demand enormous political and diplomatic efforts, and finally, we are never ideal and lead to double standards. Russia's aggression against Ukraine proved that this accountability gap, hindered justice, is difficult to explain and understand. We now have an opportunity that we must use and harmonize the jurisdiction over the crime of aggression with other international crimes. Wherever Lithuania commands the initiative of five state parties, that are Costa Rica, Germany, Sierra Leone, Slovenia, and Vanuatu, and urge all delegations to engage in frank and substantive deliberations so that the proposed amendment is adopted in this session. Distinguished delegates, just a couple of days ago, we celebrated the first of July, when the International Criminal Court was founded with the crime of aggression included in its jurisdiction. Kampala Review Conference gave another gift of hope for future generations, definition of the crime of aggression. In this historical session, let us support draft resolution presented by Liechtenstein. And by doing that, let us reaffirm our collective commitment to international justice and uphold the integrity of the International Criminal Court in support of peace, credibility of international criminal law, and its consistent and coherent enforcement. I thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And I would now invite His Excellency Samuel Member, Minister of Justice of the Democratic Republic of the Congo. You have the floor.
Thank you for giving me the floor. The Democratic Republic of the Congo welcomes the holding of this special session of states' parties on the Kampala amendments, considering that the International Criminal Court is competent for crimes of aggression and reparations to victims. This is therefore a historic occasion for states' parties, members of the ICC. It is important for humanity to this time make the ICC truly competent because the Democratic Republic of the Congo notes that at present, the International Criminal Court is responsible for three international crimes, which are in fact, for most cases, are the consequence of crimes of aggression. That is, that genocide, war crimes, and crimes against humanity actually follow, and in most cases, follow crimes of aggression. In the case of the Kampala amendments, fifteen years after their adoption, we note that they have not given rise to much enthusiasm, and that is due to the fact that the Kampala amendments include the possibility of the ICC being responsible for crimes of aggression, and this is subject to many restrictions. For these reasons, the Democratic Republic of the Congo supports a resolution which is intended to place on an equal footing the crime of aggression and the other three known crimes over which the ICC currently has jurisdiction. This would be a very good thing. And our country, the Democratic Republic of the Congo, is prepared to cooperate in that regard, which, as you know, historically, the Democratic Republic of the Congo is the country that has suffered the longest aggression for over thirty years and with an enormous number of victims. Today, thirteen million deaths, not counting raped women and orphaned children and effects for the environment, et cetera. So it is urgent for the United Nations to support this request. The ICC must be truly competent over the crime of aggression. Thank you.
I thank you. And the next speaker will be Her Excellency Ms. Tania Frein von Ursland Raichen, Director General for International Law and Legal Advisor of the Federal Foreign Office, speaking on behalf of the Group of Friends for the Review of the Rome Statute. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. I am honored to address the Assembly of State Parties on behalf of Austria, Belgium, Bulgaria, Chile, Croatia, Cyprus, Czech Republic, Denmark, Estonia, Finland, Greece, Iceland, Ireland, Liechtenstein, Latvia, Lithuania, Luxembourg, Malta, Netherlands, Poland, Portugal, Romania, Sierra Leone, Slovakia, Slovenia, Spain, the State of Palestine, Sweden, Switzerland, Timor-Leste, Vanuatu, Ukraine, and my own country, were members of the Group of Friends on the review of the ICC’s jurisdiction of the crime of aggression. Today, the Assembly meets for the first time in a special session. This in itself signals the gravity and importance of the moment. It is an occasion that we must not miss. The ICC was created to address the most serious crimes of concern to the international community as the first permanent international criminal tribunal. Since 1998, the crime of aggression has been listed under the Rome Statute at the same level as the three other core crimes. However, more than twenty-five years later, there are still significant limitations of the jurisdiction of the Court over the crime of aggression. As a consequence, we see a glaring accountability gap. We are faced with the perils of impunity and selective justice. Where representatives at Kampala already knew about the need for review, they did not imagine the level of force that would be used in 2025, the severe challenges to the international legal order and the ICC rendering our support to the ICC even more essential today. It is crucial that we stand together, making this special session a success through a show of unity and common purpose. Some might draw the conclusion that at this juncture, we should lower our ambition, that chances of reducing the accountability gap are slim. We beg to differ. The Kampala amendments were already the most widely ratified amendments to the Rome Statute despite the limited protection they offer. Indeed, these limitations seem to be one of the reasons for non-ratification. Even more importantly, they put the authors of current aggression beyond the remits of the Court, thereby limiting its very purpose. To harmonize the jurisdiction regime for all four core crimes now will send a strong political message from state parties, that we stand united in our support for the Court in times of adversity, that remain committed to the ICC as a robust enforcement mechanism to deter and sanction aggression, that we continue to invest in the rule of law at an international level, especially in times when this is most needed. Let us make this special session count. Let us truly review the amendments and seek to improvement. We consider the harmonization amendments submitted by Costa Rica, Germany, Sierra Leone, Slovenia and Vanuatu, and the draft resolution by Liechtenstein of third July, a solid base for discussion leading us towards the successful adoption of a decision to harmonize the Court’s jurisdiction. Thank you.
I thank you, and the next speaker is Ms. Pablo Arrocha Olabuenaga, Legal Advisor of the Ministry for Foreign Affairs, speaking on behalf of the cross-regional group of states parties. You have the floor.
Muchas gracias, señora presidenta.
Thank you, thank you, madam. As we gather at this special session of the Assembly, we, a diverse and cross-regional group of forty-seven states parties to the Rome Statute, deliver the following joint statement in support of the ICC. In the interest of time, the list of endorsing states parties will be read out at the end. Madam, we, the undersigned states parties of the Rome Statute, express our deep concern at the recent measures against four current elected judges of the Court, who were duly elected and in their functions. We reaffirm our support for the Court, and we are determined to continue our full support for it so that it can continue to operate independently and effectively. We underline that the Court, its officials and staff must be able to carry out their mandate and professional duties without intimidation, coercion or duress. We condemn any threats and attacks against the Court, its elected officials, other personnel and other persons cooperating with it, as well as any interference in their work, including sanctions or measures of a similar effect. We recall that the ICC and its staff enjoy, in the territory of each state party to the Rome Statute, such privileges and immunities as are necessary for the fulfillment of the purposes of the Statute, and we reiterate the obligation of all states parties to respect such privileges and immunities. We further recall that the Court has jurisdiction over offenses against the administration of justice. We, as states parties to the Rome Statute, reaffirm our unwavering and firm support for the Court as an independent and impartial judicial institution acting to end the impunity for the most serious crimes of concern to the international community as a whole, and we reiterate our commitment to defend the principles and values enshrined in the Rome Statute. The states signatories of this statement are the following: Andorra, Austria, Belgium, Belize, Bosnia and Herzegovina, Botswana, Brazil, Bulgaria, Chile, Colombia, Croatia, Cyprus, Democratic Republic of the Congo, Denmark, Estonia, Finland, Ghana, Guatemala, Honduras, Iceland, Ireland, Liechtenstein, Lithuania, Luxembourg, Malawi, Malta, Mexico, Moldova, Mongolia, Norway, Peru, Portugal, Czech Republic, Senegal, Sierra Leone, Senkice Nives, Slovakia, Slovenia.
I thank you, and I would now call Her Excellency Ms. Ramatulay Baffé, Ambassador of Senegal to the Kingdom of the Netherlands. You have the floor, madam.
Madam la presidenta. Thank you, madam. Madam, Your Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, my delegation welcomes this special session of the Assembly of the States Parties to the Rome Statute taking place at a time when the ICC is facing unprecedented challenges. I should like to thank the coordinator of the Working Group on Amendments for the excellent job this did over the last six months. My delegation firmly supports the process of harmonization regarding the crime of aggression with the three other crimes falling under the competence of the Court. Harmonizing these crimes for the Court also entails that they would respect the same legal system. This is part of the universality of the Rome Statute, which is more than ever necessary to put an end to criminal atrocities by whomsoever perpetrated. Senegal reiterates its unwavering support for the Court, which must continue to remain an independent and impartial judicial body, and we firmly condemn all measures aimed at hampering its working and the work of its staff in any situation. Hence, my delegation endorses the support declaration for the ICC initiated by Mexico, Slovenia, Sweden and Timor-Leste. Madam, the crime of aggression is a denial of the principle of sovereignty of states and a threat to international peace and security. It is unacceptable in an international order governed by rules. The respect of the rule of law internationally is not an option; it is rather an obligation for members of the international community. Espousing firmly international law, my delegation believes that an activation of the competence of the ICC regarding the crime of aggression must very strictly be in accordance with the rules and principles governing the equilibrium of this world. Regarding the ongoing differences of view on this, my delegation calls on all states parties to embark on constructive discussions in order to preserve the consensus which has always prevailed in the Assembly in similar circumstances, while welcoming the cooperation between the ICC and the UN Security Council. The view of my country is that the Court should remain exclusively a matter for the states parties. My delegation is firmly convinced that the full, across-the-board implementation of ICC competence regarding the crime of aggression largely depends on the way in which the relative amendments are adopted. Thank you.
Merci pour votre intervention.
Thank you for that.
Is Ms. Marie Charlotte McKenna, Assistant Secretary, International Law Branch, Department of Foreign Affairs and Trade of Australia. You have the floor.
Madam President, honorable ministers, excellencies, distinguished delegates, I have the honor to speak today on behalf of the Government of Australia. At the outset, I would like to reaffirm Australia’s steadfast support for the Court and the pivotal role it plays in the fight against impunity for serious international crimes. We are committed to upholding and defending the principles and values enshrined in the Rome Statute system, as well as the Court’s integrity and independence. In Rome, in 1998, we stood together and agreed to end impunity through real action. We adopted a foundational instrument, the Rome Statute, and we agreed to establish an international criminal court to prosecute those most responsible for serious crimes of concern to the international community as a whole, and to punish those who commit them. In Kampala, in 2010, we built on this historic moment by adopting by consensus amendments to the Rome Statute on the crime of aggression. In New York, in 2017, we marked another major milestone by deciding by consensus to activate the Court’s jurisdiction. For the first time since the international community embarked on this project at the end of World War II, we were able to agree to a definition of the crime of aggression and the conditions for a permanent international criminal court to exercise jurisdiction over those responsible for this reprehensible crime. Australia supported activation of the Court’s jurisdiction over the crime of aggression on the basis of the model whereby both the victim and the aggressor state must have ratified the amendments. Madam President, as we gather here for the next three days, we have an opportunity to reflect on the progress of the Rome Statute system and the lessons learned since Kampala. In doing so, we must not forget the decades of hard work and compromise and the long road traveled to reach this point. We must remember that the Kampala amendments represent a finely balanced framework for ending impunity for the international crime of aggression, and that they are the fruit of our decades-long collective efforts. Efforts to reopen the balance achieved in Kampala demand the most careful consideration. This requires time and deliberation as we consider the many political and legal complexities inherent in the crime of aggression regime. This could only be achieved through considered discussion. The next three days are only the start of this process. Australia welcomes an ongoing dialogue between states parties on this issue. Madam President, as states parties, we can be proud that the outcomes we achieved on the crime of aggression in 2010 and 2017 were arrived at by consensus, a strong demonstration of our unity of purpose. At a time when this unity and progress towards universality are more important than ever, we underscore the responsibility of all states parties to continue to strive to reach consensus in our collective decision-making. In this way, we, as states parties, can demonstrate our collective support for this institution in the face of challenges. We look forward to working constructively with states parties and all stakeholders over the next few days on this important issue.
I thank you, and I would invite our next speaker, Ms. Hui Seung Lee, Director of Treaties Division of the Ministry for Foreign Affairs of the Republic of Korea. You have the floor.
Madam President, excellencies, distinguished delegates, I would like to express my sincere gratitude to you, Madam President, in your capacity as the President of the Assembly, as well as the team of the Bureau, the working groups, and the Secretary of the Assembly for all the excellent work in preparing for this special session. This special session provides a crucial opportunity for states parties to understand diverse positions among them and keep exploring to reach convergence on the crime of aggression. To this end, some work remains to be done, discussing achievements of the Kampala amendments, sharing success stories and challenges in ratification and implementation, and thoroughly examining varying interpretations and opinions among states. These are the stepping stones that will help narrow down our differences, prevent fragmentation, and achieve greater unity and universality. While ending impunity and harmonizing jurisdiction are the goals that this Assembly should continuously pursue, we have been hearing voices of concern as well, and this indicates that adopting a new amendment without sufficient consultation to resolve contradictions may, contrary to their intended purpose, undermine the Court’s long-term development and effectiveness. In this regard, I believe the goal of this special session should be to achieve an outcome based on consensus. We commend the Court for fulfilling its essential mandate despite facing unprecedented challenges in recent times, and it is these challenging circumstances that further underscores the critical need for meticulous approach, unity among states parties, as well as the promotion of universality. The Republic of Korea believes that by this way, the Court’s resilience can be strengthened. As a major contributor to the Court and an ad-country focal point on universality, the Republic of Korea would like to reaffirm our unwavering commitment to the Court’s mission. Through our collective efforts and shared commitment to the principles of international criminal justice, we can advance our common goal of accountability for the most serious crimes of international concern. I thank you, Madam President.
I thank you, and I recognize Mr. Pablo Arrocha Olabuenaga, Legal Advisor of the Ministry for Foreign Affairs of Mexico, speaking in their national capacity. You have the floor.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much, madam. The International Criminal Court is a key institution in endeavors to provide justice to the victims of those most serious crimes. Since the Rome Conference, Mexico has supported the inclusion of the crime of aggression under the jurisdiction of the Court as one of the four core crimes of international criminal law, and that we believe the lack of a definition is unfinished business. In Kampala, we played an active part in its adoption, and we voiced reserves on the possible limitations for the exercise of jurisdiction as we did during the activation process in 2017. Given the current geopolitical context, the crime of aggression must mean protection for all states parties against illegal acts committed by any state, whether or not that state be party to the Rome Statute, as is the case with the other three crimes. The prospect of obtaining justice and reparations as a result of any aggression must be a real and tangible possibility. It is not really of any use to recognize on paper the existence of a crime, which is moreover, one of the most serious violations of the UN Charter, unless we have procedural rules which... rules which make it possible for it to be punished. This special session is vital for that. We once again have an opportunity to harmonise the jurisdiction of the crime of aggression with the other crimes falling under the competence of the Rome Statute. We are committed to work proactively and constructively in the negotiations. And it is worth also thinking, if our aim is to ensure that the legal regime for aggression be effective, or if we are instead to retain a method of working vis-à-vis consensus. Madam, regrettably, this special session is taking place in a context where the Court is being assaulted as a result of exercising its mandate. We condemn all the attacks and cyber attacks against the ICC, and we categorically reject the imposition of sanctions against its elected officials. The delitimization of the Court, as well as political, economic, and legal, juridical pressures against its staff aimed against international criminal justice and the multilateral system, the best way of dealing with the situation is by means of full cooperation to ensure that the ICC may fulfil its mandate independently and effectively. Mexico has unwaveringly defended the principles of complementarity, judicial independence, and universality. We need to strengthen the Court and show unity regarding its tasks. We have to eradicate impunity, protect the rule of law, and promote peace and justice. This is our shared responsibility for the good of both future and present generations. Thank you.
I thank you for your statement, and give floor to Mr Boyes Deptula, Director, Department of International Cooperation and Human Rights of the Ministry of Justice of Poland. You have the floor.
Madam President, Excellencies, distinguished delegates, Poland aligns itself with a statement of the Group of Friends of Review of the Rome Statute. It presents the following remarks in its national capacity. The Polish delegation believes the crime of aggression should be treated under the same jurisdictional framework as the other crimes encompassed by the statute. Accordingly, we advocate for removal of all existing restrictions limiting the International Criminal Court's jurisdiction over this grave crime. This will require the adoption of relevant amendments to the Kampala amendments to give the ICC a consistent, clear mandate. At the same time, we stress the need for great care in any move towards unifying jurisdiction. We must avoid jeopardising the significant progress made to date or risking any divisions among state parties to the Rome Statute. Our shared objective should be harmonising jurisdiction through a consensual decision by the Assembly, reflecting the unity of state parties. We are open to discussing compromise solutions to accommodate concerns highlighted by various groups, as we also heard today. Moreover, we cannot overlook the broader challenges currently confronting the Court. These include external pressure such as sanctions and lack of cooperation by some states, as well as damage to the Court's reputation related to the alleged misconduct by an elected official. These challenges threaten the Court's ability to continue fulfilling its mandate. In light of this, the overriding priority for all states' parties should be to present a unified front to defend the ICC and safeguard its integrity and ability function. We look forward to a constructive dialogue on this crucial issue and to working together to further our shared commitment to international justice. Thank you.
I thank you, and I will now give floor to His Excellency Mr Tomohiro Mikanaki, Deputy Permanent Representatives to the United Nations of Japan. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. It is an honour to address this Assembly of States' Parties on behalf of the Government of Japan. Japan reiterates its firm support to the ICC. The effectiveness and universality of the ICC hinge upon robust international support and broad participation. Discussions regarding amendments, including those concerning crime of aggression, should be conducted in a manner that contributes to the effectiveness and universality of the ICC. We strongly hope that ICC will steadily gain trust from the international community by carefully implementing its mandate. Any discussion on the expansion of jurisdiction should be based upon careful and thorough deliberation, and it will be meaningful only when the ICC is widely accepted by the international community. Given the extremely challenging circumstances surrounding the ICC today, we are concerned that the hasty expansion of jurisdiction might not only deepen the rift between the states' parties and non-states' parties, but also undermine the unity of the ASP and ICC's effectiveness. We must therefore exercise the utmost caution in assigning new tasks to the ICC based on clear, shared legal understanding. Madam President, we should not turn blind eye to the fact that only 48 states' parties have ratified the Kampala amendments, less than forty percent of all states' parties, and less than twenty-five percent of all the UN member states. We would welcome a discussion during the Review Conference to identify the reasons behind this low rate of ratification and how to address it. I would also like to underscore that until now, all ASP decisions have been adopted by consensus, and there is no precedent for decisions by vote. Our strong belief is that consensus is the only way forward, especially given the gravity of the issue at hand, which is the amendment to the Rome Statute. I thank you, Madam President.
Thank you for your statement, and the next speaker will be Mr Marko Rakovic, General Director for International Law and Protection of Interests, Ministry of Foreign Affairs and European Affairs of Slovenia. You have the floor.
Madam President, Slovenia aligns itself with a statement delivered by Germany on behalf of the Group of Friends and cross-regional statement presented by Mexico. In our national capacity, I would like to reaffirm our unwavering support for the global fight against impunity and for the International Criminal Court. Today, we have gathered to discuss a matter of great moral, legal, and historical importance, the mandated review of the Kampala amendments on aggression. Aggression is the most serious of all crimes. It is the illegal use of force by one state against another, committed through the actions of individuals in possession of authority. Aggression is not a historical relic; it is a threat that continues to jeopardise the serenity, dignity, and peace of nations, particularly small and medium-sized states. For these states, international law is the first and last line of defence. Harmonisation will ensure that the Court's jurisdiction over the crime of aggression functions in the same manner as it does for other core crimes. This is a necessary correction. It does not expand the Court's mandate, rather it ensures its coherence. It makes justice complete. It reaffirms the principle that no crime and no victim is less deserving of protection under international law. Eighty years after establishment of the Nuremberg Tribunal, we must ask ourselves, are we ready to fulfil the promise made then, that peace shall not be violated with impunity, and that no leader is above the law? Let us therefore harmonise the Court's jurisdiction over the crime of aggression and reaffirm our shared commitment to justice for all. In this regard, we submit for consideration the draft resolution presented by Liechtenstein at the last WGA meeting on 3rd July. Thank you.
I thank you, and I will go forward to Mr Vegaard Emos, Deputy Director, Ministry for Foreign Affairs of Norway.
Thank you, Madam President. Let us start by reaffirming Norway's unwavering commitment to the ICC and its mandate. The ICC is facing unprecedented pressure. At this Assembly, it is more important than ever that we show our united and strong support to the Court. Our ultimate goal with the creation of the ICC is to end impunity for all four international core crimes. Norway attaches high importance to support the international norm that criminalises aggression. That is why the Norwegian government has taken steps to ratify the Kampala amendments, and we are now preparing a proposition to the Parliament. We are looking forward to tomorrow's sessions on the lessons learned from the Kampala amendments. This will be an important stock-taking exercise, contributing to creating a common understanding on the progress made and the challenges that remain. Madam President, the resolution in Kampala was a delicate and carefully negotiated compromise adopted by consensus. Now that we are embarking on a review of the Kampala amendments, Norway would like to stress the importance of maintaining this consensus. A show of unity is the best way to express our support for the ICC. Another crucial aspect in considering the proposed amendments is ensuring legal clarity and predictability. We recognise that certain legal questions remain, and these must be carefully considered before a decision on harmonisation of the Court's jurisdiction can be taken. This is important for us, these parties, as well as our common effort to reach universal accession to the Rome Statute. Lack of legal clarity could also prejudice the effective functioning of the Court. The risk of politicisation of the Court and its mandate is unfortunately real. As states' parties, we cannot cower to political attacks, but we must ensure that our decisions are beyond reproach. Madam President, Norway will engage constructively at this Assembly to reach consensus and find common ground for moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, and the next speaker is Ms Taria Longstrom, Director of the Ministry of Foreign Affairs of Finland. You have the floor.
Madam President, Excellencies, distinguished delegates, Finland aligns itself with the statements delivered by Germany and by Mexico on behalf of groups of states. Finland remains steadfast in its commitment to uphold international law, which includes individual criminal responsibility for the most serious international crimes. The crime of aggression amounts to a manifest violation of the UN Charter and of the sovereignty and territorial integrity of the victim state. It corrodes the very foundation of the peace and security of all nations. As such, the crime of aggression demands a unified and principled global response. In supporting the strengthening of the ICC's jurisdiction, Finland is also guided by its national security interests. We place our trust in international law and institutions and spare no efforts to strengthen the protections they offer. We strongly support efforts to align the ICC's jurisdiction over the crime of aggression with its jurisdiction over the other core international crimes. This alignment would close a critical gap in the Rome Statute. From the very beginning, Finland has advocated for the inclusion of the crime of aggression in the Rome Statute. We fully support the amendment proposal submitted by Costa Rica, Germany, Sierra Leone, Slovenia, and Vanuatu. The challenging global situation only underscores the urgency of addressing this jurisdictional disparity. The review is a forward-looking exercise aimed at strengthening the collective framework of accountability. Our shared goal as states' parties must be to ensure that the review achieves its intended purpose, to enhance the ICC's capacity to uphold justice and deter future acts of aggression. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will now give floor to Ms Francesca Gatt, Shorset Affair of Malta. You have the floor.
President, Malta has joined the statements delivered by the Group of Friends and the joint statement in support of the ICC. I will now make some comments from a national perspective. Malta reaffirms its unwavering support for the International Criminal Court, the only permanent and independent international criminal court which serves as a beacon of hope and justice for victims, signalling that perpetrators of the most serious crimes are and will be held accountable. While emphasising that prosecutorial and judicial independence is fundamental to upholding the rule of law, we emphasise that the ICC plays an indispensable role in ensuring accountability. In this regard, Malta remains committed to supporting the Court, to fulfilling obligations under international law, and to upholding the principles enshrined in the Rome Statute. Fifteen years have passed since the Kampala Conference, a milestone which marked our shared determination to strengthen international criminal justice. Yet, despite the progress that has been made over the past years, there is an urgent need to do more. Nationally, Malta remains committed to ensuring that our legal framework is fully consistent with and supportive of the ICC's mandate. We are steadfast in our dedication to strengthening our ability to collaborate effectively with the ICC and to ensuring that the delivery of justice transcends borders. In Kampala, we asserted the importance of defining the crime of aggression, a core crime covered by the Rome Statute. While we take note that there are divergent views in the room on the way forward, Malta remains convinced that the time has come to harmonise the jurisdiction of the four core crimes, to ensure a coherent, effective, and unified approach to international criminal justice. In conclusion, we cannot allow perpetrators to exploit jurisdictional inconsistencies and evade accountability. The Court cannot remain powerless or constrained by the current limitations of exercising jurisdiction over the crime of aggression. I thank you.
I thank you, and the next speaker is Ms Gabriela Gonzalez, Alternate Permanent Representatives to the United Nations Minister of Justice of Uruguay. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. For Uruguay, the adoption of the Rome Statute in 1998 was a milestone in the collective pursuit of justice and reaffirming international law and accountability. It is against this backdrop that Uruguay once again voices its firm commitment to the lofty work of the ICC, its combating impunity for those accountable, to bring to account those responsible for the most heinous international crimes. Uruguay subscribed to the Rome Statute in 2000 and deposited its ratification in 2002. And in 2013, we ratified the Kampala amendments on the crime of aggression. In 2023, we deposited the ratification of all the amendments of the Rome Statute for war crimes, such as those pursuant to Article 124 of the Statute. On the transition, is therefore extending the scope of the treaty, strengthening it. In 2017, we ratified the Kampala amendments. This meant that we had a clear definition of 15B for the definition. Although the crime of aggression is a crime which comes together with the other three crimes, it's different, which means that there is less protection for states' parties. This situation means that while citizens of those states which are not party to the Rome Statute, should crimes of genocide, crimes against humanity, war crimes, should they commit these, they can be judged by the tribunal, they cannot come under the jurisdiction of the Court for the crime of aggression. This means that we need to harmonise matters in order to combat impunity for those responsible for the most heinous international crimes. Uruguay unequivocally supports a harmonisation of the way in which the Court exercises its jurisdiction and advocates a consensus-based solution amongst states' parties in order to achieve the aim as swiftly as possible. We understand and we have studied deeply the complexity of the proposed amendment with the various technical analyses. Madam, we are flexible when it comes to possible improvements of the language to be incorporated, and we and we are going to seize this opportunity for legal development on the matter which, given the possible approval of the draft amendment, once in force, it will be for the court to decide itself on its competence in the light of these provisions and to define the ensuing jurisprudence. We should not ignore the situation that the court is facing today. It's being buffeted in an unprecedented fashion, and it's therefore more than ever necessary that the state's parties show political will for cohesion and be strategic in the way in which they support the independent work of the court. This can include working out a plan for achieving in the short term and in a realistic way with good faith the harmonization we seek. Uruguay, including reiterates its firm commitment and support for the court's work for more than twenty years. It has become consolidated as an institution in which we believe for a rule governed by international law and their highest value is protected by the Statute of Rome. We want now a world that is more just, more humane, and less cruel. Let us trust we reach an understanding on that.
I thank you for your statement. And the next speaker is Ms. Beatrice Meyer, Minister of Consular and Legal Advisor, Vermont Mission to the United Nations and Head of Delegation of Canada. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, distinguished delegates. Canada is honored to participate in this important review of the Kampala amendments on crime of aggression. We take this opportunity to reaffirm our strongest support for the International Criminal Court and for accountability for international crimes, including the crime of aggression. The support of each and every state party is of paramount importance during this time of continued threats to the court, ranging from cyber attacks to sanctions to arrest warrants being issued against its officials. Indeed, we regret that the court's principals could not join us here today. Canada recalls with pride the active and constructive engagement of states in their collective efforts to reach consensus in 2010 and in 2017, leading to first the adoption and then the activation of the Kampala amendments. These milestones have strengthened the global accountability framework to hold perpetrators of aggressions to account and to uphold the rule of law. Our evaluation of whether to ratify the Kampala amendments on the crime of aggression continues. As state parties are gathered to share challenges and lessons learned, Canada commits to listening carefully to the perspectives of others. At the same time, we wish to highlight one key concern that persists to this day. There is uncertainty regarding the full scope of the amendments and how the court may interpret and apply them in practice. This ambiguity pauses challenges to predictability and fairness for all parties. Some states have historically expressed concern that this uncertainty might hinder international efforts to resolve ongoing conflicts and discourage countries from participating in legitimate international security and stabilization operations, operation that can be geared at preventing the very atrocities addressed within the Rome Statute. This concern must be approached with care to ensure that the court's work complement rather than compromises international peace and security. Madam La Presidente.
Madam Chair, Canada firmly supports this process. This is an opportunity to make use of everyone's experiences while strengthening the Kampala amendments, looking to the universalization of this process, to hold those responsible for the crime of aggression. This is with absolute respect for international justice. We encourage all states to actively and participate in good faith in the review of these amendments. This is an essential stage. Canada is staunch in supporting the court and justice, sovereignty, and world peace. We firmly condemn the acts of aggression which are aimed at not having any crime go unpunished. We wish to cooperate with all state's parties in the course of this important review process. Thank you.
I thank you. And next speaker is Ms. Caroline Schwager, Vermont Representative to the United Nations of New Zealand. Your Excellency, you have the floor.
President, New Zealand is a strong supporter of the International Criminal Court and its mandate to hold to account those who commit the most serious crimes of concern to the international community. New Zealand was the seventeenth country to ratify the International Criminal Court statute in 2001. The principles of universality, cooperation, and complementarity lie at the heart of the Rome Statute system. New Zealand officials worked hard at the review conference at Kampala in 2010 to achieve a consensus definition of the crime of aggression. We have also consistently emphasized that we must listen to each other's views and constructively discuss concerns raised by all members and to address them to the extent possible while preserving the integrity of the court. This assembly currently faces another important milestone with respect to the crime of aggression. At this critical juncture, New Zealand would like to emphasize the continued importance of a consensus decision that supports the wider credibility of the court. We recognize the importance of the assembly being united on an issue of such importance and sending a clear message to the international community regarding the court's ability to fulfill its mandate on all crimes of concern to the international community. We look forward to working with state's parties to achieve a successful outcome. If we are to achieve lasting respect for international criminal justice, we should take time to reflect on the challenges we have faced. We must also move beyond reflection and invest in a court that will stand the test of time. As we look ahead to the next chapter in the court's history, New Zealand remains committed to working alongside others to ensure the court continues to be and is seen to be an effective and sustainable judicial institution. Thank you, President.
I thank you. And next speaker is His Excellency, Ms. Ambassador Sorge Frans Cadaneze, Vermont Representative to the United Nations of Brazil.
Madam President, Brazil reaffirms its support for the International Criminal Court, especially at this unprecedented moment. We also commend the working group chaired by Ambassador Juan Jose Quintana of Colombia for its contribution to this special session. Our position on the ongoing review process is rooted in a firm commitment to the integrity of the Rome Statute, legal certainty, and the unity of state parties. In our deliberations, we should be mindful of the risks of any amendments or outcomes that could undermine the court's credibility and legitimacy. This is especially true in a context of increased attempts to politicize the court's jurisdiction and to ratify its international law. While some states strongly advocate for expanding the court's jurisdiction over the crime of aggression, they selectively turn a blind eye to certain acts of aggression, including those taking place in the Middle East. While some decisions of the court are promptly endorsed, others are questioned or even entirely dismissed, all depending on the nationality of their target. Instead of strengthening the court, such behavior can only do its harm. At this moment of unprecedented challenges to the court's authority, we should also be guided by the imperative of preserving the unity of state's parties. Brazil firmly believes that at this juncture, any outcome document must be adopted by consensus and should avoid promoting divisions amongst the membership. Now more than ever, the court needs solid foundations and unquestionable legitimacy to carry out its work, not the instability of controversial constructs. The court has reached a critical juncture. Several of its officials have warned that the institution is under existential threat. Non-state parties have imposed illegal and illegitimate sanctions and issued unacceptable threats against the court and its officials. This is a blatant attempt to disrupt the mandate entrusted to the ICC by us, the state's parties. Let us take this review conference as an opportunity to reflect and come together in upholding the remarkable agreements that made the Rome Statute possible. Allowing contingent political calculations to influence our appraisal of the statute, failing to achieve consensus and to express our collective support for the court, would send a deeply negative political message and be a historical setback for international criminal justice. Brazil will engage constructively in the negotiations during this special session. We must reach an outcome that safeguards the integrity of the Rome Statute and reinforces the unity of state's parties in their support for the court. Thank you.
I thank you and give floor to Mr. George Kamanda, Legal Advisor at the Vermont Mission of Sierra Leone to the United Nations. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Excellencies, distinguished delegates, Sierra Leone will make this statement in addition to the statement delivered by Germany and Mexico on behalf of the group of states. Madam President, Sierra Leone is pleased to participate in this special session and reaffirms its unwavering support for the International Criminal Court and the Rome Statute. We remain firmly committed to a more just, fair, and effective international criminal justice system, one that responds credibly to the most serious crimes of concern to the international community. Our commitment is grounded in our belief that the international rule of law, and more recently, the lessons of our transitional justice and the legacy of the special court for Sierra Leone. These experiences have shown that sustainable peace must rest on the pillars of justice, accountability, and the rule of law. The inclusion of the crime of aggression in the Rome Statute and the adoption of the Kampala amendments were landmark achievements. The activation of the court's jurisdiction over aggression in 2018 was a necessary and historic step forward, ending impunity for unlawful uses of force. However, the current jurisdictional framework requiring both the aggressor and the victim state to have ratified the amendment or referral by the Security Council has revealed significant accountability gaps. Unlike the court's jurisdiction over genocide, crimes against humanity, and war crimes, this regime risks reinforcing perceptions of selective justice and undermining the court's credibility and impartiality. Sierra Leone is yet to ratify the Kampala amendments partly based on principle, recognizing the political nature of the compromise that led to the achievement in Kampala. We also believe that all four core crimes under the Rome Statute must be subject to the same consistent and universal standards. The current asymmetry is therefore difficult to justify in law and in practice. Sierra Leone is therefore pleased to have joined like-minded states in proposing the harmonization of the jurisdictional regime for the crime of aggression, with that applicable to other crimes pursuant to Article 12. We commend the important work of the Group of Friends on harmonization for fostering constructive dialogue. We call on all state parties to support universal ratification of the Kampala amendments as well as to embrace the reforms required to close the accountability gap. These steps are essential to upholding the integrity and universality of the Rome Statute. Only then can the ICC fully realize its promise to deliver justice without fear or favor and to ensure that the unlawful use of force by states is no longer met with silence. I thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Ms. Sally Langrish, Director General of Legal at the Foreign, Commonwealth, and Development Office of the United Kingdom of Great Britain and Northern Ireland. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Your Excellencies, distinguished delegates, I welcome this opportunity to address the assembly on behalf of the Government of the United Kingdom. Accountability is important. This year marks thirty years since the genocide at Srebrenica in Bosnia and Herzegovina. Friday marks the International Day of Reflection and Commemoration, where we remember victims and honor the survivors. Turning to the subject of this session, I would like to thank the Chair of the Working Group on Amendments, Ambassador Quintana, for his efforts to guide this assembly to consensus. I would also like to thank you, Madam President, and your team for organizing this session at very short notice. Let me begin by reiterating our unwavering commitment to the International Criminal Court and its objective of ending impunity for the most serious international crimes. Since the international community began to rally around the concept of a permanent international court at the historic Rome Conference and as an active part of this assembly of state's parties, the United Kingdom has backed the court. We are invested in its aims and its success. Now we assemble here to review the amendments on the crime of aggression adopted by consensus in Kampala in 2010 and activated by consensus in 2017. To date, forty-eight state's parties have ratified the Kampala amendments, but seventy-seven, including the United Kingdom, have not. We've heard it said that the amendments would be more widely ratified if they had gone further, but we've seen little hard evidence to justify that assertion, nor any evidence so far that there is consensus for change. So today, as was the case in 2010 and 2017, it is clear that a range of views exist on ratifying the Kampala amendments and on harmonization of jurisdiction. On the latter, an amendment proposal has been submitted by a group of state's parties, and we welcome consideration and discussion of the merits and challenges of that proposal this week. But we are concerned that the amendment proposal creates more legal and practical uncertainty than it would resolve, and it does so without the backing of all state's parties. We have seen calls by some state's parties that we should consider proceeding by way of a vote. However, it is vital that we do not abandon the consensus-based approach that the ICC has enjoyed throughout its history. Consensus means we can say that all are fully supportive of this court as an assembly. And at a point when the court faces unprecedented challenge, this unity has been our strength. Disunity would be a gift to those who want the court to fail. On that point, let me be absolutely clear that the UK supports the independence of the ICC and does not support sanctioning individual court officials. We remain fully committed to ending impunity for the most serious international crimes, and we will continue to make those points whatever the outcome of this conference. We shouldn't pretend that our discussions at this session are divorced from the reality of the situation faced by the court. Our decisions must be clear-eyed, made in full consideration of the potentially profound impact they might have on an organization that derives its mandate from its state's parties and the impact on the court's officials who work tirelessly to deliver that mandate. The United Kingdom, along with Canada, France, Japan, and New Zealand, has tabled a resolution which provides for continued meaningful discussion of these complex issues, building on the opportunity we have this week to discuss. We have proposed as a basis for discussion that a conference should take place once two-thirds of state parties have ratified the Kampala amendments. We don't think it's a responsible or reasonable approach to discuss amendments coming into force for...
I thank you. And the time seemed to run off, and please submit your full statement to the Secretary on Justice to be published. Next speaker is Mr. Claudio Toronjoso Rappetto, Director General of Legal Affairs of the Ministry of Foreign Affairs of Chile. You have the floor.
Gracias.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. We are now at a crucial moment for the system of the Rome Statute. In a complex international context where the ICC is facing unprecedented pressures, to strengthen its legal basis is more urgent than ever before. A coherent and predictable court is also a more legitimate and resilient court. Seven years after the activation of the jurisdiction of the court over the crime of aggression, we are meeting under the man... we are meeting under the mandate of this assembly to review amendments on this crime. When we met in Rome more than 25 years ago, we did not envisage that the crime of aggression would continue to be a regrettable reality of our times. Thus, it is imperative to harmonize its jurisdiction with the other crimes under the jurisdiction of the court, to strengthen the normative framework of the Rome Statute, and to allow the court to have the place it deserves in the system of international justice. In the view of Chile, the proposal of Costa Rica, Albania, Sierra Leone, Slovenia, and Vanuatu seeks to correct the issue's consistency while respecting legality. This proposal, if adopted, does not impose any automatic obligation, according to the procedure in paragraph five of Article 121 of the Statute. Its entry into force will require the express ratification of every state party. Therefore, states will be fully and sovereignly free to decide whether they wish to adhere or not to this framework, allowing states like Chile, which seek to strengthen the jurisdictional regime of the court, to make progress toward that end. After years of rigorous technical and political work, we're not starting from scratch. During the meetings of the Working Group on Amendments, we have had an opportunity to listen to and consider various positions, proposals, and concerns of state's parties. Therefore, the proposed amendment is the result of a cumulative process. To postpone its adoption would be an opportunity lost and a signal of stagnation. The credibility of the system depends on our capacity to act. Let us use this special session to affirm our commitment to international justice and to the protection of future generations from the most serious and internationally relevant crimes. Thank you.
I thank you. And the next speaker is Her Excellency Ms. Hallie Cristina Pipa, Chargé d'affaires of the Permanent Mission to the United Nations of Cote d'Ivoire. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My delegation, for its part, would like to congratulate you and your bureau on the holding of this special session, on the review of the amendments of Campala on the crime of aggression. Madam Chair, the crime of aggression, while included in the Rome Statute, like other international crimes, so far has been imprecise in its definition and the conditions for it falling under the jurisdiction of the court. This is due to an absence of consensus among the main components of the diplomatic conference adopting the Statute in 1998. However, we must note that before the Rome Statute, the Campala negotiations and the General Assembly of the United Nations dealt with the crime of aggression in Resolution 3414, adopted on the 14th of December 1974. That resolution, in Article I, stated that aggression was an act of a state against the sovereignty, the territorial dignity, and the political independence of another state, or in any other way incompatible with the UN Charter. Article eight of the Campala Amendments, paragraph two, literally reproduces that language of the resolution. In terms of Article 15, it determines the conditions of the court's jurisdiction with regard to the crime of aggression, be it on the action of a state or under another initiative or the United Nations Security Council. The crime of aggression has therefore been the object of important consensus in the General Assembly of the United Nations and also among the state's parties to the Rome Statute. Madam Chair, the Criminal Court of Cote d'Ivoire provides for and punishes the crime of aggression. The ratification of the Campala Amendments by my country will confirm what is already included in our national laws. Therefore, my delegation welcomes these amendments and considers that they will contribute to reinforcing the sovereignty of state's parties, the universality of the ICC, and in the exercise of its competence. Thank you very much for your attention.
Merci pour votre...
Thank you for your statement.
And the next speaker is His Excellency Mr. Francisco Fabian Tropepe, Permanent Representative to the United Nations of Argentina.
Buenos dias a todos.
Good morning to all. Madam President, Argentina ratifies its commitment to the work of the ICC and its mission to do justice toward the more serious crimes and the rule of law and the system of international law. After the adoption of the Rome Statute, 15 years after the first review conference, and seven years after the activation of the jurisdiction over the crime of aggression, the court has matured and has improved in its struggle against impunity. Argentina played an important role in negotiating the Campala Amendments. Our country adopted these amendments under a law in 2016 ratified in 2017. It entered into force one year later, according to the Statute. The mandate given to the Campala Conference clearly identified the objective. In fact, point four of Resolution six of the eighth session of the Assembly of State's Parties states that with a view to identifying the amendments that should be approved under the Rome Statute and the rules of the Assembly of State's Parties, end quote. The mandate of this special session derives from Resolution six, adopted by consensus in 2010 in Campala, and it consists in reviewing the amendments on the crime of aggression. Given this mandate, the special session should not prejudge any result. It would provide for reflections to see what has been achieved and identify pending challenges before considering possible modifications. To make progress on new amendments without understanding the challenges they may pose could increase further fragmentation of the applicable legal regime. It would also lead this assembly to, thinking about the special mandate of this session, we hope that at this special session, we will prioritize unity and avoid differences to the benefit not only of the court but the international community as a whole. We hope that these debates will allow us to identify matters which require special attention and to explore ways and means to materialize our conclusions whenever appropriate. Thank you.
I thank you and give floor to Mr. Bobakar Sidiki Diarach, Secretary General, Minister of Justice and Human Rights of Mali. You have the floor.
Merci, Madame la Presidente.
Thank you very much, Madam President, of the Assembly of State's Parties. The delegation of Mali welcomes this conference, devoted to reviewing the amendments of the Rome Statute of the ICC. The difficulties besetting today's task is looking at the Campala Amendments on the crime of aggression. We have not had time to implement this or look at the effects. Now, the text shows more the lax and practice. So what legal or factual argument, what motivation today militates for amending the Campala Amendments? Wouldn't it be better to advocate for those countries which have not yet ratified it to do so, looking at the difficulties besetting the task of having an amendment for a more objective aim? Given subjectivity, Mali would like, once again, respectfully to voice its support for the Rome Statute and to ensure that there is an independent, transparent, non-selective process respecting international law. The court must show that it's sensitive to questions about its impartiality and credibility, and that should lead us to take decisions that today will look at the distrust on the court. These legitimate actions should not be ignored by the state's parties or the court. It is vital to be prudent and to avoid texts that challenge to too great a degree an international court or are too trite. So Mali welcomes the real pertinence of the Campala Amendments or even the amendment to those which we're looking at today. We have, though, to consider the circumstances and the concept. The aim is just to find legal ways to get around the existing legal provisions. Therefore, Mali is not in a position to support, as it stands, the draft for the amendment to the Campala Amendments. We want to see a rational approach. Thank you.
Merci pour votre...
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mr. Diego Colas, Director of Legal Affairs, Minister for Europe and Foreign Affairs. Vous avez la parole.
Merci, Madame.
Thank you, Madam. Madam, ladies and gentlemen, France firstly wishes to state once again its support for the International Criminal Court, the leading and first international lasting universal criminal court. Today, more than ever, this court is being existentially challenged. In this context, it is vital for us, the state's parties which created it, to show our unity, to defend it. We trust that this special session will be held with this spirit of unity. France wants to state again its espousal of protecting international law. The court is a fundamental pillar of this. It is vital to concentrate on preserving its statute, its universality, and its effectiveness, but also its values, all within a stable legal framework supported by all state's parties. Indeed, it doesn't appear to us to be appropriate to split on proposals where there is no consensus. In this spirit of union, we join together with all those states which have supported the ICC and propose the idea that there be a declaration of support which could be adopted by this assembly, for example, on the basis of those elements which have been reached by the highest degree of consensus and a declaration made by all. Madam, this session was scheduled in 2010, or foreseen in 2020, to carry out a review of the Campala Amendments on the crime of aggression. Our position, a reserved position on recognizing the competence of the court on the crime of aggression is well-known. We do not think that consensus has developed very much on this. We doubt that the time has come to render this crime applicable to states despite their refusal to ratify the Campala Amendments and bind themselves. For us, this review should take stock of things and look clearly at the difficulties which might affect implementation. We have to note that if these amendments have been more ratified than others, it hasn't been the majority of states of the Rome Statute. They would not represent everybody, nor indeed a majority of the international community. The universality of the Rome Statute should be our vision for the court, and we must pay attention to anything that might lead us to stray from that. Questions remain on the proposal to review the amendments, as was evident in the meetings of the Working Group, and I thank the Chair for that. A lot of work remains for us to be done. A lot of issues are outstanding and not resolved. We are willing to work here. It is in the spirit of support for the unity of the court and the resolved support of international law, willingness to listen to and argument draft resolutions that have been tabled. It is in this spirit that we shall take part in the discussions over the next few days. Thank you.
Merci pour votre intervention.
Thank you for that statement.
Well, Head of the Legal Service, Minister of Foreign Affairs and European Affairs, Defence Development Corporation, Foreign Trade of Luxembourg. Vous avez la parole.
You have the floor. Thank you, Madam President. Madam, Luxembourg fully endorses the statement made by Germany on behalf of the states and members of the Group of Friends for the review of the Rome Statute. I would like to bring forward certain considerations in a national capacity. Luxembourg welcomes this special session, and we should like to thank all of those who have contributed to making this dialogue possible. The fact that we're meeting here today in this exceptional format bears witness to the gravity of the challenges facing us, as well as the shared responsibility which falls to us to respond thereto. The adoption in 2010 of the Campala Amendments to the Rome Statute on the crime of aggression was an historic step forward in international criminal law. However, the fact that the system for competence of the crime of aggression is more restrictive than that pertaining to the three other most serious crimes covered under the Statute compromises the global mandate of the ICC and reduces the legal protection of states against the illegal use of force, a protection which is particularly important for small and medium-sized states. The harmonization of the system of competence for the crime of aggression is both timely and necessary. It's not a mere technical adjustment. It is a reassertion of our shared commitment to international law, criminal accountability, and the strengthening of the system of the Rome Statute. Luxembourg fully supports the proposed amendment submitted by Costa Rica, Germany, Sierra Leone, Slovenia, and Vanuatu, as well as the draft resolution submitted by Liechtenstein on the 3rd of July. We think that these texts are a very solid basis for our discussions this week, and we trust that they will make possible the adoption of a decision to harmonize the competence of the court, and at last, make good the lack when it comes to accountability for the crime of aggression. Let us grasp this opportunity to ensure that none of the most serious crimes remain outside the scope of international justice. Thank you.
Merci pour votre intervention.
Thank you for that statement.
Next speaker is His Excellency Mr. Jose Alberto Priscutierrez, Permanent Representative to the United Nations of Guatemala. You have the floor.
Señora Presidente.
Madam President, Guatemala is pleased to take part in this important discussion. We wish to highlight the distinguished work of Ambassador Jose Quintana for his tireless efforts leading the Working Group on Amendments. Madam, the implementation of the Campala Amendments has not been easy. We are aware of the political sensitivities that this issue raises, and also that this crime is just as grave as the other crimes under the court's jurisdiction. Guatemala is part of the majority group of countries that has not yet adopted their Campala Amendments because the corresponding domestic process has not yet been completed. Guatemala in 2018 deposited a declaration under paragraph four of Article 15 bis. Guatemala did not accept the court's jurisdiction over this crime until the domestic processes of ratifying the Campala Amendments have been completed. In international law, important developments occur gradually. We believe that this issue requires more time and more work. We believe that this issue requires more time and more work. If we have not been able to conclude our domestic process to take on the original amendments, which are important but complex, it would not be possible for us to assess, to voice how difficult it would be to have new internal processes to look at an amendment to the amendments. We welcome those delegations, or we thank those delegations, rather, for their proposals which have been tabled. We aim, we value the aim of harmonizing the exercise of the Court's jurisdiction for all core crimes, but we're not as yet in a position to support it. We need still carefully to look at this very studiously so that we can move forward in a way that it is benefit to the Court. Guatemala is willing to take part in another review conference with an intense preparation in order to cover the concerns of all delegations. However, we must abstain from looking at further amendments which do not arise under the Statute for having such a conference. We wish again to say that we lend our firm support to the Court. We shall take part in a constructive spirit, aiming that the outcome will strengthen unity amongst the states parties. The complete version of this address has been given to the secretariat. Thank you.
I thank you for your statement, and when I look at the list of speakers that has been distributed on the wall, we have exhausted the list of speakers for this morning session sometime in advance of the closure of this plenary meeting, but I'm aware that the Credentia Committee has already been convened, and some delegations need to be present there. So I would, of course, remind that the general debate will continue this afternoon from fifteen hours onwards. I thank all the speakers for their remarks and the support expressed for the Court and the importance mandate, and I thank for most of you observing actually the original time limit. I think with this way of moving forward, we have shown our ability to make best use of our time in this session. When I look at the list of remaining speakers, including the states parties, observer states, international organizations and other entities, and non-governmental organizations, it looks that we would not need the whole time during this afternoon session for the general debate. And for that reason, I would propose that we would convene the Working Group on the Campala Review originally scheduled for tomorrow, this afternoon after the general debate has been concluded. If the coordinator agrees or has no objection, I would like to propose this one and, of course, seek your agreement of this assembly that we can do so. I do not see any objections. I thank you very much for your flexibility. This adjustment will contribute to advancing the work of the Assembly in an efficient and timely manner. And as I indicated, the Credentia Committee is already meeting in suite of office of Conference Room Two, and if there are any members of that committee that have not gone to the office as of yet, please do so upon the adjournment of this meeting. And I believe secretariat has an announcement to be made. You have the floor.
Thank you, President. I just wanted to let you know that the side event today, what's at stake, the devastating impact on victims of aggression, and the case for harmonization from a civil society's perspective, will now be held in Conference Room Six. Thank you.
Thank you. Unless I see any further requests for the floor, this meeting is adjourned, and I wish you all pleasant lunch break and see you back here at fifteen hours sharp. Thank you.